Should be going to scouts tonight, taking David so you can give Ry a ride.
I'm at Cub Scouts. I'm in the parking lot for Cub Scouts right now.
Okay, well, it is six o'clock PM. I'm going to call to order the special meeting of the Perry Township Board of Trustees. And welcome any guests that are here with us. Ms. Bankin, we call the roll.
Lynn?
Yes.
Archorn?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
So this meeting has been called because we have split. In the acceptance of the bids for our mowing contract, there were several stipulations that were made initially in the printed ad. They call for bids that went into the newspaper and that were announced. Three bids were disqualified because they three bids were disqualified because they were called, they didn't have the proper address on it. I muted myself for that. One of the bids came in and was incorrect format. The other bid which was voted on and accepted was not incorrect format, but was not broken down specifically according to the instructions in the newspaper that said each cemetery needed to be broken down individually. So what's happened Doug is we awarded you the bid. You offered the services we're looking for at the best rate and availability. But in listing all four of those of the of the cemeteries, because each one was not specifically named with a dollar figure, some folks have called into question the legitimacy of accepting yours as a bid as well. So we now have three different options. Three different options that we can work with. One option which has been approved by legal and the OTA and various other places because the cemeteries were broken down individually by name. But the dollar figure was inclusive of all four. We just go on the assumption that dividing by four is the cost per cemetery. And according to semantics, that is acceptable. The second option is that we would go with the second bid that was offered. However, there are some restrictions that unfortunately made that may or may not have been the best choice. The third option is to tank the bids altogether, start over again from square one and re-accept bids. That would however be financially rough for the township to do because it's very expensive for the postings and the listings and everything we go through. So we are faced with a challenge now that the three of us will discuss tonight in open forum. And if there are people that have comments, we will accept them. We're going to discuss those three options and decide what the best is to go with. And the best for the township in the long run, based on what we now have to work with. Okay?
Okay.
I know you've put out some expenses based on this. And I'm sorry, I hope it hasn't been anything too terribly painful. That doesn't mean you don't have the bid. We just right now can't say, yeah, we're going to sign the contract tonight until we've gone through all the options. And the only way we can discuss anything is for all three of us to hold a meeting to even discuss.
Okay.
Okay, so at this point, Missy, Jason, the floor is open to you guys. What say you?
Well, Karen informed me that she gave you the stuff that I sent her this afternoon.
She did. Yeah.
That provided a very interesting fourth option. I'll say. I know. Because when we were initially going through the bids, the bid from the township perspective that our road maintenance crew wrote up wasn't necessarily reflective of the work per se. I had a nice conversation with the Mr. Millhouse regarding the level of effort, man hours it takes to do mowing and trimming and everything else to get a better idea. Because I didn't get an opportunity to do that before and I really should have. So going through that, you know, he had he had told me how many man hours it would take approximately for two people. One day mowing, one day trimming. And when I looked at the numbers that the township calculated, the numbers were were off based on that, based on that standard. And also, we didn't have anything written down or tracked to show that after the initial purchase of the equipment, the cost goes down substantially in the following years. Because we don't need the mower, we don't need to buy the mowers, we don't need to buy the trailers, we don't need to do a number of things that really pushed that cost. And when the man hours were brought into what it takes per the person that's had the job previously, the numbers were very competitive with the two bids that we did receive. But it did have a leg up for anything after the first year because the price went down substantially because we had already owned the equipment at that point. So I felt it was part of my due diligence to provide these numbers. Based on my conversation with Mr. Millhouse as well as the understanding that once we make, if we were to make an initial purchase of the mowers and trimmers and whatnot and the trailer, we'd only have to do that once. So that did provide some insight into what the township could do to provide good service while ensuring a low cost over a multi-year average. So I wanted to at least put that in front of the other trustees and say, look, we didn't consider this the first time around because the number was so high from the township perspective. But the reason it was so high is because in the number of hours that were calculated on there along with the pay rates of the people involved skewed the number bit. So that said, that does provide a competitive alternative. If that's something we would want to look into.
I don't know if we can add that fourth option after we've opened it for a bid. Because once we've invited the public to submit their bids, can we then turn around and say, well, no, we decided to do it ourselves?
We did not get the, we did not get the write-up from the township road department until the night. I didn't get it until the night that I opened the bids. So it was on par with everything else that we had looked at. And because of that, I didn't necessarily take the opportunity or have the time to look at it critically and see that there may have been some gaps in it. Or some numbers that were unintentionally greater than what they should be.
Were those numbers submitted because the road crew has an interest in absorbing this as part of their role? Because they've got an awful lot on their plate right now.
I know. And and that's a question I didn't get to ask. I was hoping, Mike, are you on? I see a couple of people with an eight three three number on.
Yes, Sam.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jason.
So basically, the the numbers that you gave us were based on a three-man crew working 24 hours each per mow.
Correct.
And when I talked with Mr. Millhouse, he's, he had informed me that with himself and another person, it would take approximately 16 hours to mow. That's two people one day. And then two people one day to trim for a total of 32 hours per mow across the four cemeteries. That said, I looked at your write-up a little bit differently. And kept your numbers that you had. I actually have a spreadsheet where I put all the numbers for all the bit, the two bids that we received plus yours. And then I added another table that showed a modified cost based on reduced man hours required per mow. Plus the fact that after the first year, the mowers, trailer and weed whackers would be owned. And it would be much cheaper at that point to have two people mow and trim on consecutive days per mow.
Jason, quick question. When you say two people at eight hours and it's done in one day, are you talking about one cemetery or four cemeteries?
All four. So basically, when I, when I talked to Mr. Millhouse, he told me that to mow Eversole and Pleasant Hill took five hours each, Piermont took four, Landis took two. To trim, Eversole and Pleasant Hill both took five hours, Piermont took four and Landis took one.
For a total of You have a typical summer day in Brookville Perry Township land. And it's going to be, or even in the other side of it, regardless, it's going to be 90 degrees and muggy as heck. You're not going to get all that done in one day. So you're going to have to be able to account for and then
The hour stick, the hour stick regardless of how many days you chop it into. So, you know, it's, it's the thing here, and it was something that was said by one of the residents that resonated with me, which was the best deal for the township and the residents. And when I was looking at it from a monetary perspective, I would have been remiss if I didn't submit this as an alternative based on the numbers that we already had in hand. Just a, just a slight modification to bring it in line with the assessment of what it truly takes to do the work versus what we had in the initial write-up.
And financially, Mike, if the road crew ends up taking over the mowing of the cemeteries, what would that take away from time-wise? As far as we've got the Wolf Creek watershed coming up and road repairs and any other duties? What, what would be impacted by adding additional tasks either hourly, you know, hour-wise or financial-wise?
Well, it'd be, you know, whatever comes down, whatever projects we got and you know, we just got to make sure we probably got, keep three to four people, you know, either two part-time, two full-time so we can spread them out. And we got a road project, just send one to start mowing and then catch, catch up with them and, you know, we just, just like a funeral. If we got a road project going on and get a funeral call, we've got to pull away and go do the funeral. Well, same as this. I mean, we just have to manage our time. I guess that's the best way to describe it.
So in what we save in one aspect, we may end up spending overtime or extra in the others.
And that could be, but I mean, depending, if you get a week of rain, you get behind, it might take a little, you know, some overtime to get caught back up. I mean, when you're relying, doing as far as outside work and relying on mother nature, it could be cruel to you. So it just, you got, you just got to be time management and, and work around it and do what you can.
Missy, do you have anything to weigh in?
Mike, you said that you would probably have to hire two more part-time people.
No, 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 no. We just, we got to at least keep three on like we got now and possibly hire a part summer time help possibly. But it just depends on our workload. I mean, this year we do not have an issue two projects, so that's not going to pull us away, but we'll have other work to do. But, you know, like anything else, if something comes up or a phone call comes in, we take care of that and then go back. I mean, we've done it before and I guess we can do it again.
And I, I know that Dave is like the same as Karen. He can only have so many hours. So I don't know how many hours he has already.
Dave, Dave can have more because he, he can have a full, which we do not work him so much and he's off some days here to save the hours and, but he can work more than Karen because he's not restrained, restrained on the money wise. So he can, he can work his full 1,500 hours.
And, and I will say, I mean, I, I didn't even consider a part-time person, but a part-time person would bring the cost down even more. Because right now between Randy and I, I basically, I took Mike off. And it would have been Randy and Dave is who I used because of the, the, you know, the, the price per hour that they earn. And the time that it would take, it was considerable savings. If you then take half the time off of either one of the two to add someone or just take one of them off, the price is going to come down again because I guarantee you, someone who comes in, work part-time over the summer isn't going to be making what Randy makes and likely wouldn't make what Dave makes. So that's another benefit is that if that's part of the consideration of bringing in someone part-time to, to help with this, if we did it, the price would come down even further with a part-time person. So food for thought.
Missy, you got anything to weigh in on outside of option four? Did you have anything else?
Well, yes and no, but who, so will they, this, this, this part-time person, will they be using our trailer and our mower and all that? And our truck? Or are we going to have them do that or all that themselves? How is that going to work?
This was all based off the township's estimate of buying the equipment and using our own equipment. So whoever would be involved would likely be writing probably with someone who was pulling the trailer, right? Because it, it, at max, it would only require two people efficiently. And that would still leave two people to work cemeteries or work the funerals or anything else. And then they can spend, spend the other two guys off that work if something really big hits, right? And we need the manpower. So, yeah. It's a viable option. I do agree with what Mindy said about, you know, we've run this through OTA and legal as well. And we're covered there. So it's, it's not that leaving room for interpretation can be iffy because there's no constraint on how everyone will interpret it, right?
Oh, yeah.
And the naming of the four cemeteries, when I read the, on the night that I opened the bids, while the price wasn't segmented, the names of the cemeteries was. And that looked like it fit what we had in the ad. I didn't have a problem going to legal and saying, hey, is, am I right?
Right.
Because I'm fallible. Everybody's fallible. We can make a mistake. But we were told that we were within the lane, right? We, we weren't out of bounds. We were within the lane and we could persist. So the question here becomes, you know, we have a couple of viable options. And it just depends on, you know, when it's all said and done, between the constraints, the costs and possible issues, just with like Mike and someone else had mentioned, you know, you never know when you're going to get a weak rain. And you can't mow when it rains. You have to wait for it to dry out and then it's going to really shoot up and you may have to mow twice. So, you know, there, there is no perfect equation to figure all of this out. But just lining everything up side by side by side. I'm comfortable discussing the options that we have on the table. I'm not leaning one way or the other. I just wanted to make sure that given the right numbers, the township numbers actually could pay dividends. And that's all. I, I understand that there's a issue. There could be impacts to manpower. I know that there could be another COVID spike and let's say, heaven forbid, funerals increase. Something like that. And our, our maintenance team gets pulled 10 ways from Sunday. That's risk, you know? And when we're looking at this, sometimes the cost is offset by res, by risk management. So having somebody outside do it, they're not constrained by anything other than the terms of the contract. They have to get it done and it doesn't matter if there's 10 funerals in one week, period. So that's what I was saying is that I'm open to the multiple options on the table and willing to talk through each one of them. Because I, I think we've got we're well within the lane to do any one of the three, honestly.
My only concern is, and I would like to get this awarded, and that, that's my concern, are we who are we going to find to mow it? And are they going to be dependable or are they just going to say, no, this isn't right for me when we've already got Mr. Gaiman? And I was very impressed with him and everything that he's, he submitted. So, you know, that's
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and, and like I said, the township doing it, there's risk there.
Oh, yeah.
We don't know what could happen over the summer.
No.
And, you know, it, it is a risky, albeit lower cost over multiple years. It is risk-laden and that is something worthy of acknowledgement. So that said, I'm open to discussing the other two options in full.
I am not a fan of having our road crew take that on. Unless, you know, Mr. Craft or the road crew wants to convince me otherwise that they're desperately dying to go out and do this. But I would rather contract it out to somebody who reliably can set a date, a schedule, a time on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, whatever day they want. Or over the course of however, two days, do these two, two days do that, to, to have a reliable schedule so that our road crew doesn't have to get pulled away from something else because somebody's unhappy because their cemetery hasn't been mowed in three weeks.
And that's fair. That's fair.
And, and I think our road crew has a lot on their plates right now. I know Mike said we don't have the same projects that we had. But we have a lot going on that they do an amazing job at what they're doing. Do we want to add more stress to another job so that everything else then is an okay job?
Right.
Right. Mike, can I ask you a question? I know in the summer you get busy like with footers and you have to mow the roads and funerals and that I know you, you, you do the mowing over the town or the administration building and things like this. Do you think that you, you know, you would have time to do the mowing?
You know, we, we used to do it before, Missy, you know that. And, but we, we had, didn't have the two cemeteries, as Eversole and Providence. But, you know, it comes down to whatever you trustees feel that's right and, and money wise and everything else. So, I mean, it could be done. It just, like I said, got to make sure we get three on and, or at least two, and then one can rover and do, you know, find a grave that has to or do a little road work or however that works out. But, you know, we've done this before and like I said, at one point in time, 20, 25 years ago, I said, we might be going, doing it again. So, you know, just whatever you decide, but
I guess, I guess my point is when you, when you, you know, if you, if we have Dave and Randy mow, then who's going to, then you're going to mow the roads or this or that? So that, that's what I'm saying. And what happens? Then we get to the point where so, so it rains or you guys get tied up with a funeral or something like that. And then the cemeteries still get mowed. So are we going to have to, is it to the point where we're going to have to pay overtime for you guys to come in and do that because they didn't get mowed and not under any of your issues, but because of the funerals and the roads and everything else?
Probably on a funeral day, you know, it's hurry up and rush around, get set up, and then you got a little downtime. So you can be mowing, you know, like I said, it's time management. You could mow until about the time the funeral gets there. So you're taking, you know, you're taking advantage of that time. So I'd be whatever, I guess it's one way to look at it is, you know, you don't, nobody knows what their workload's going to be. And when the workload comes in, you got to do, you know, time management and do, do what you can regardless. And, you know, it might took Jeff two days to mow, so, and it might take us three. I don't know. But that, we'll have two mowers at it. I've talked to Clay Township, they run two mowers and kind of what their timeline was. And, you know, we'll deal with what comes and gets thrown at us. One way or another, we'll get it done. We always have done it or have done that. So whatever it takes. And there might be some overtime, there might not, you know, I can't answer that. But if it rains like it did two summers ago and it's wet, we mow what we can. We might have to leave some go because it's not worth tracking and turning the cemetery up and then go back and get it. So it's whatever we can do.
Okay. And also vacation time, because I know that you take, you take a lot off there in the spring, not a lot, but you take time off in the spring for planting. And I know Randy's going to want to take off. So I mean, I, as trustee, I think that's another option that we have to look at. And if, if we go with an outside person, that person's not going to take a vacation. They know that they have to do this. So that, that, I, I guess that's my concern. That's what I'm saying.
Well, if, if usually two events are not on vacation. If it is one, then like Jason said, he's figured this on two people the way it is. So there will be two people here. Like I said, it's whatever trustees decide. Like I said, whatever gets thrown at us, we take it head-on and do what we got to do to get the job done. And we'll go from there. I mean, that, you know, mother nature could be cruel, should be kind. It could be that we have a drought year and we don't mow that much. Don't know. So, but, you know, usually it's about average of 20 mows a year.
Right. And, and if it, if it is a drought year, you know, then we won't be paying the outside person that money either. So that's another
So there, there's another bit of information that I garnered from Mr. Millhouse. And Mike, you can vouch for this. A lot of cemeteries, especially Clay Township, they spray weed kill around their headstones. We don't. We trim.
That's correct.
And when I looked at the, the bid submitted by Sampson, all their stuff was weed kill. They had three different kinds of kill that they put on to manage the grass and had I, had I known that prior to opening the bids, that would have been something I would have also taken into consideration. But yeah, it said in the advertisement to trim around the headstones and trim around the cemetery. So to, to me, that, knowing that now, see, I, I'm happy for the, for the slight rewind and replay here. That bid wouldn't have been a good fit. Because it doesn't
Well, if I understand what you're saying, Jason, but if I remember right, what you said was, you know, you confused on the numbers on his. He had a individual bid per cemetery, if I remember right, in a total. And then he, he dropped down, if I remember right, you saying that he, he charged this much He charged this much and that's where it got confusing for you, I believe. That he charged, if he does extra, you know, mow and trim. That's what was in the, in the bid on, in the paper, you mow and trim.
Yep.
Now, if, if he would spray, he would charge you, if I remember right, how you explained this. That he would charge so much for that cemetery to, to spray it, uh, around the headstones. Uh, I think there is what? Total kill was one of them, which is like a roundup around the headstones. So that's, that would be killing the grass around the headstones. You know, I, I did that once. I, I sprayed like that one time and especially on the hills, it ran on me. It rained and ran and it looked kind of bad. So. That's why I've never, never sprayed, but I think the way his was broke out, he would mow and trim. For eight twenty-five, but if he did any other work, the way I understood you talking about it. It, there was a charge for each cemetery. That's the way I understood it when you said, when we talked.
So yeah, there, there was three costs per cemetery per mo. Well. And looking at it with extended eyes. It looks like it's a one-time cost per cemetery and that's how I calculated it up. For a pre-emergent application, weed kill and total kill. Three different applications per cemetery at a fixed rate. Per cemetery for each of those. Nowhere on his doesn't say trim. It says mow. So.
I'd like to chime in on the Sampson also. I have everything right here in my hand and. Um, this is earlier. Was my first opportunity to really get a good look at it and I looked at some things and I had some considerations. Um, it, the availability for Sampson is only Mondays and Tuesdays. So if it storms. Saturday, Sunday. Then he can't mow on Monday, Tuesday, then we go a whole week before we have a potential of the grass being mowed again if needed.
Right.
He also, his team consists of himself, one other person and two from Labor Ready. I don't know how many people are familiar with Labor Ready, but it says that they have five to 10 additional people with experience in grass cutting and trimming available anytime. They don't always have people available at the ready anytime. So Labor Ready is not hired, it's day hire. That he'd have to call in the morning, say, I need two guys. So that does or doesn't guarantee he's going to have. The people available when he calls. If he calls and they're already out doing whatever they do. But that doesn't guarantee that they, um. Actually, that he will have the people that he quoted. Um, also because he quoted the, the kill, um, the weed killer. And we did mention trimming. If you, if we're gonna, you know, be considerate on that, but he says workman's comp begins April first, twenty twenty-one.
Well, you gotta remember, Mindy, if he's hiring from Labor Ready, they pay that. He does not pay it. And if he's self-employed. You do not pay workers' comp, self-employed.
But my point is like, he may not be able to have those people. Those are not guaranteed. People.
That's fine, but. To go back a little bit, Mindy, Jeff Millhouse mowed usually Tuesday, Wednesday. If it did rain, he would try to mow Saturday. For the catch-up day. You can have plans any day. You can mow. Wednesday, Thursday, you can mow Thursday, Friday, but if it rains. Then you're out and you come back another day and mow and that Jeff did the same thing. I mean, he was mowing usually Tuesdays and Wednesdays. And if it rained, he would try to catch up on Saturday. So it, it, you know, that, that time. Like you're saying, that's when you like to be mowing, Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday. But if it does rain, then you have a catch-up date. And hopefully you're not overbooked. To where you don't have that, uh, luxury to do that.
Hopefully.
Right. And he, and he. And he does state availability is Mondays and Tuesdays and he has other, he does other. Things.
Right. So it, it doesn't mention any flexibility and I'd like to understand what it means when he says workman's comp begins April first, twenty twenty-one. I am not sure I understand what that means.
Well, he would hire. Somebody himself, other than a outside, uh, of an employment agency, he would have to pay that. But if you hire. Uh, from an employment agency, then they pay the workers' comp themselves. You're paying that agency to. Loan you guys or however you wanna put it to mow. Other than that, he does, the way I understand it, you don't have to carry workers' comp on yourself.
Right. Which is why I'm trying to understand why that's listed in his bid and why that. What, what does that?
If, if he's to cover. Um, I guess if he's to cover somebody, he's gonna hire himself, you know, under his payroll, then that would have to take effect.
But he's not, cause he says he'll be using two individuals from Labor Ready.
Right.
And if I could. Mindy, if I can chime in on that, I think what he's saying is he doesn't have workers' comp yet. And if he does hire somebody, it will be available April. Of twenty-one.
Okay. Yeah, thanks. Uh, that's, that's what I was thinking that would mean, except that it's saying he's not gonna hire, he's gonna use Labor Ready. So that's where I was confused.
I think it's a, I think it's probably a bad wording of a and/or I'm gonna use these guys or if I do get workers' comp and hire somebody myself. Um, it will be available. Of twenty-one. That would be my best, uh, buddy who's self-employed. Um. And have gone that route for many, many years and looked into it. I would have to say that would be my, my best guess. And I think that's what he's saying.
Also, chances are this is a boilerplate. Proposal response. And he likely has that field and he fills it out for every single thing that he bids. Um, based on how many, uh, bids he wins. Gives him the flexibility to hire people versus Labor Ready. Um, if he needs the extra manpower. So, you know, a lot of times this is just boilerplate that's in there and they, they put it in there so that we know. But it may not even be applicable.
If I could, if I could also chime in on your guys' three or four different options, uh, obviously. Obviously, I'm hoping for option one because I've already bought. A few mowers based on the fact that I thought I was awarded the contract because you guys signed. Um, my quote and sent it back to me. Um. I wasn't ever told that it needed to be broke down per cemetery. I submitted it.
Bed, Doug was in the bed.
I never called the bid. I verbally asked and then I turned it in and I verbally asked, did I fill it out correctly? And I was told, yes, you did. So.
Well.
Um, kind of.
Was not.
Kind of poor communication, um, since I even followed up to say, did I fill it out correctly? Is this exactly how you wanted it? Um, so hopefully. Um, hopefully we can go with plan A. If, like Mindy said at the beginning of the meeting, we break it down evenly among the four. Um, that seems weird cause one property is six acres and other one's only one. I would think logically you would just divide it by acreage.
And, and, and Doug, for your information, for our legal counsel, you did break it down correctly. So.
I, I thought so too, yeah. And.
Yeah, our legal counsel has said that how you made your proposal. Um, and not just our legal counsel, but I took it up a couple of other ladders and other options as well. It is unfortunate that you're a victim of semantics. Um. We, we had. Several bids that we had to throw out because they were not exactly to the rules to the T. Because they were addressed incorrectly. It should have said attention Karen Kayler on the envelope. They did not. So those three got disqualified. There is a, a. Movement on the table. There, there is a call. That yours should also be disqualified because it was not broken down by cemetery. You did, however, break it down by cemetery. You did not give an individual price quote per cemetery. So that's a matter of, that's what we're fighting right now is what is the definition? Of. What was written in? The ad in the star, what was written in the ad in, in the bid? You did call the township office and say, did I do it correctly? So with whomever you spoke. That's kind of where. The responsibility of all of this would lie. Is. You know, you called, you asked, you were told you did it correctly.
Doug, may I ask who you talked to?
Um, I believe I followed up with, uh. I'll also say this as far as like everything I'm hearing tonight on your guys' concerns, on pros and cons. Um. I'm gonna say I'm available, um, seven days a week. I've been, I've been mowing for over twenty years. Um, I've not overbooked myself the last few years because I've done. Um, a large volume of mowing for a very long time. I think my, the most I ever mowed was a hundred and forty properties. Every week in six different counties in Ohio. Um. And yes, it is a juggling task. Uh, rain and broke down mowers and broke down trucks. I always run. Uh, multiple trucks as backups, multiple mowers. Uh, I don't run. Only the amount of mowers I, I need. I always have one or two backups. My, my schedule is very flexible. For rain, um, and for breakdowns. So I would hope that you guys would see that. Obviously, having never used me, that, uh, where you guys might have problems with people calling off sick or vacation or funerals. Or big road projects, I'm not gonna have any of those issues. It's always gonna get done for the price, no overtime. Where your guys, uh, regular employed. Uh, employees. Were, are gonna juggle schedules, vacations, sick time, broke down mowers. Everything I have, but a lot more because of your guys' road, crew, funerals, vacations. Um. It's not gonna be a concern hiring it out. Uh, I do personally live across the street from one of the cemeteries. I wanna see that one. Especially, um, look good. And so I wanna take pride in my own community and do a really good job as well. Not just to make money for myself, but to, to, to see the result right across the street from me.
And I, and I, and Doug, I know for a fact that you and your wife walk through there now and, and you have been. For a while picking up. You, you, when you walk through, you'll pick up sticks or things that, uh, flower arrangements or things like that. So I know that, I know that you have a vested interest in this.
I have a vested interest in Brookville. I'm, I'm about to walk into, um, a Cub Scout meeting right now. I'm very involved helping to lead our local Cub Scout. Um. Pack here. I wanna see Brookville Perry Township, uh, this just, this community. You know. Be better and look better. Yeah, we walk through that cemetery when it's nice, three, four times. Uh, a week walking our dog to Sycamore State Park. So yeah, we pick up trash. Um, just because it's right there in my neighborhood.
Well, Doug, back to your question, I need to know that way I can have a conversation with them, with them to let them know that, you know, make sure. They look at the bid and, and do it correctly to get it from this mess. Um, you know, can you remember who you talked to?
Mike, right now, what does it, what does it matter? The bid?
Because I, I wanna address this to make sure that if somebody in the front office is taking this, they are aware to make sure things are right. My opinion on this situation, it sounds like the way Jason's saying, there's discrepancy on all five bids. I think to be fair about it, if, if anything, go out for three bids. That'd be fair to everybody then. If there's been discrepancies on this. You know. Um, like I said, I've had this contract sitting on my desk, but I couldn't give it to Karen to fill out because. The insurance, the written, uh, insurance from the insurance, the gesture where he goes from was not handed in or. Uh, individual bids on the cemetery. Been, I've been sitting here, it's been on my desk. So it sounds like there's discrepancies on all five bids. If that's the case, the fair thing to do would be go, go out for bids.
If I can interject on that, I think Mindy, uh. I believe Mindy said that they've defaulted legal and mine was within the scope of. Um. Being correct. And you guys signed it and sent it back to me, so.
It, it was, we did check it with Nathaniel. We've, I've also checked it with, um, a couple of other townships and I checked it with some people at the OTA. Um, it is acceptable.
Would I be able to ask a question?
Who's that, who's saying that?
Dale Sim. Could I ask a question?
Absolutely, Dale. Yeah.
Okay. What I wanted to ask. They said that they checked to see if it was filled out correctly. How could that be when the bids hadn't been opened? How could they know if it was filled out correctly?
Because the outside of the envelope wasn't correct.
The outside, but I'm asking about the inside. You wouldn't know if it was filled out correctly and broken down by cemeteries. There'd be no way of knowing that. When the bid hadn't been opened yet.
Because we couldn't get past the incorrect address. That was.
Okay. I guess that was just a question I wondered.
Yeah. So Dale, Dale, you are not incorrect and I thank you for actually questioning, um, this whole process because. It is an unfortunate situation that. There is no good answer to any of these.
Right.
Hey, Mindy.
Yeah.
It's Karen. Those bids that did not get opened until that night. I have his envelope in my hand. Where he addressed it to Perry Township, attention Karen Kayler, thirty twenty-five Johnsville Brookville Road. Brookville, Ohio, four, five, three, oh, nine, mowing quote.
Well, I think what, what Dale's asking about is not. The ones that got opened, but there were three that were dismissed and never got opened because the addressing of them. The outside of the envelope was incorrect. So.
Correct. They were not, they were not addressed to me. That's correct. They were not addressed to me.
Understand that, but I just wondered, there'd be no way of knowing whether it was bid individually that you'd be able to tell that because they were not open. That's what I, that was the part I was. You know, referring to that. I don't see how you would ever know that because. You wouldn't know if that part was filled out correctly because they weren't.
Exactly.
Correct.
And, and Dale, the curiosity is driving me crazy. I really wanna know what's in those envelopes, but we never will.
Well, I'm, I'm. I'm going, as, as myself, I'm gonna go ahead and voice my opinion. I, I say that we already accepted Mr. Douglas's or Douglas Property Management, his quote. Um. We have legal counsel. The gentleman lives in Perry Township. Uh. He's, to me, I have no issues with it. Um, Mr. Sampson's, I don't, I, I don't quite understand his bid. Uh, there are some things in there that worry me about the Monday and Tuesday. Um, I understand about our. Our, um, our guys doing it, but there again, when, when summer comes, um, you know, it may take them. A couple of days to mow all the roads and things like that. So we're gonna have to pull them off or if there's a funeral or et cetera. So my opinion is that we stay with what we said. For legal counsel, they said. It's good to go. That's, that's, that's what I gotta say.
I think we unfortunately chalk this up to a learning experience. Um. If. Legal has said. Semantically, it could go either way. We've got Schrodinger's cat. We'll never know what's inside those envelopes. And we'll never know if any other bids were an option. I don't think our road crew taking on any more work is the best option for this year or right now because there's a lot of external circumstances that come into play. And I think the health and wellbeing of all people involved, given that this is supposed to be a blazing hot, hellacious summer. Is very important to also keep in mind. So. I think we had two options on the table. Douglas and Sampson. And I was not able to, uh, participate or voice my opinion very much the first time around. But. This time around, I would have chosen and will choose Douglas over Sampson. That's my answer on that one.
Jason.
I guess it's on me, right? Um, yeah, no, I concur. I mean. Here's the thing is that some valid questions were asked. After the initial selection. Um, we went back, we looked at it with fresh eyes, even dug up some new information. Made some very. Brought up some very interesting points. When Mindy says chalk it up to a lesson learned. Let me take it a step further. One of the things that I know from working with. One of the things that I know from working with federal and state contracts is, is that if you want something in a specific format, you provide the format explicitly as a template. Um, that's, that's something Perry Township's done in the past. I think it's something we need to look at doing on all future bids. If there's a way we want to receive it, we need to define it. Add in the, and you don't have to put the extra word, wording in the ad. Say that they can stop by the township and pick up a packet
Yes.
that has all the required information and the template for response. Once we do that, interpretation goes out the window, gaps are eliminated, and Perry Township ends up being a little bit more efficient for the lesson learned. That said, I concur on Douglas Properties. I think that with everything said, they did answer it, or respond, not by price, but by naming the four cemeteries separate. I concur with Nathaniel and the OTA legal leadership. Um, I enjoy, I enjoy these conversations, and I enjoy the engagement from the residents.
Yes.
Um, because it's important that we do what we can to get it right. And all things said, I think we got it right. We're supported, and we're ready to move forward.
And I, and I, 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 and again, I wanna concur to that, too. You know, I appreciate, you know, everybody, uh, the residents and Mike and everybody else voicing their opinion, but we do, we will, there are issues that we have to look at, and we have made mistakes, and we're gonna continue to make mistakes, so. But in this case, I guess I make, I guess I make a motion that, um, that we accept Doug, uh, Douglas Property Management.
I don't know if we need a motion, but I'll second.
Just to cover ourselves, I would say, because this was brought back up, and just to cover ourselves. Because with residents questioning it and everything else, I would say that.
Well, I feel that we were put in a difficult situation, and I apologize, and I guess, you know, I felt really bad. I had to step away from that part of the meeting. I, I had an emergent situation and nobody to help me with it. And when I realized after the meeting what had taken place, and went back and actually watched the video, I had some questions and I had some concerns. And then when it was brought up by Mike, and then a day later brought up by Mr. Sim, you know, I realized we were in a sticky situation, because things were not the way they could have been, they're not the way maybe they should have been, but they were okay the way they turned out legally.
Yes.
And my thoughts were, okay, in the long run, somebody's gonna be unhappy about this. What do we have to back us up for our decision?
Right.
And it came down to semantics, came down to how people read things, how people interpret things, how things are written. And by precedence, um, the, the legal advisors that I spoke with were able to find other townships in the exact same situation. And they said, you know, when things go to trial, when things go to hearings, when things go to mediation, they're based on precedence, on things that happened before that lead to, you know, that, that are in the same situation, and how they ended up resolving them. And their resolving, their, most of their resolve was to go with their initial decision and stick with it being, you know, a platform to do things differently the next time. Um, I, we had options on the table, including a new one from Jason. And I think, you know, given the situation, it would be difficult financially for the township to reopen the bid and start over. We're not in a position right now where we can just spend money frivolously. Um, the second option, you know, going backwards, we had a choice of two, and the second didn't seem to work. Going back to the first one, allowing for the mistakes to be corrected and going with our initial thought seems to be the best and easiest, most financially feasible and safest decision right now for the good and welfare of the township as a whole.
Great.
Rhonda, do you know if we actually need to go forward with a vote on this?
Well, in the legal ad, it said one, two, or three years, and that was not put in the resolution during the February 9th trustee's meeting.
Well, that is written into the contract based on, um, what Mr. Gaiman had put in was until the termination or decision of the township. So that would be our decision, our decision, one, two, or three years, because I did ask about that as well. And he put that kind of onto us. Again, it was in the wording.
Um, I, I, I've not seen, I've not seen the contract, so I don't know what the contract reads. If the contract reads, you know, one, three, or five, or whatever, I think that's, I think we need to see the contract and then give it to Mr. Gaiman, but, you know, first time doing it, I would, myself, I would only award a one year, but, so, you know, he gets a fill for it, and we get a fill for him, but I, there again, I don't know what the contract says.
Well, that was also in the legal ad, in the paper.
So that said, basically, if we wanna make a motion, let's make it one year. Cut it there, and, uh, we can, do we need to? I guess when it comes to options or anything else, is our plan to recompete this after one year? If that's the case, then we can be very clear with the motion. If, if we plan to grant options for the out years, then, uh, we need to make, be clear on that as well for the motion.
I'm going to suggest.
You can extend, you can extend it past, if you give them one year, it's in the contract where you can extend, extend it, if both parties agree.
So based on annual review?
And I'm going to suggest that based on everything that occurred, and the way the bids were accepted, and this whole meeting thing, that we accept the contract for one year, and after next year, either we automatically renew, or we invite Mr. Gaiman to rebid, to submit the bid again, open it up again, and go from there. But at least this year, for this time, we award Mr. Gaiman the contract, and then skip through this summer and decide how we wanna go forward next time.
And Mike, I would like to see a copy of that contract, if you could give me one, please.
Karen's got it on her computer. That's where I got it from, so Karen's got it.
Okay.
Yeah, Karen, if you could shoot that out in an email to all three of us tomorrow, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we continue with the contract as previously discussed with Douglas Property Management for the term of one year, at which point in time we will either renegotiate or reopen the bids for anyone, again, to apply and invite Mr. Gaiman to reapply at that time.
Seconded.
Win?
Yes.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
All right. Doug, does that work for you?
Yeah, I was gonna say, that sounds very wise, because you don't know if I'm actually gonna show up every week. But I'll say this, I'm only being, I'm only joking a little bit, because, um, I, I've mowed grass for many years. Um, I think almost every customer I've ever had, at the end of the season, would always say, "Are you gonna mow for us again next year? We definitely want you to do it." So, um, as far as the quality of the cut and being there every single week, I have no doubt in my mind that you guys will be thoroughly impressed and happy with that.
And we appreciate that. Um, and then, you know, those whose bids didn't get opened, or Mr. Sampson, or whomever else missed the boat, you know, we give them an opportunity to say, "Hey, please submit your bid again next year. We'll do this again," and give everyone a fair opportunity.
And it gives us a year to come up with how we want to have people respond to our bids.
Right.
So.
Make sure it's very clearly stated that a format is offered, and there's no questions, so that everybody is included.
Yep.
So if I, if I read yours right, Doug, real quick, that you're gonna trim every other mowing, correct?
Every other, every other mow will be, uh, trimmed, yes. Every headstone will be done, and buildings or trees, or whatever it is that needs trimmed around, will be done every other time.
You, and then, I, well, go ahead and make that motion. I'm sorry to get in there, I just wanna make sure I understood that right, but go ahead.
Oh, we already made the motion.
We already did it. We already voted.
You're, you're perfectly fine, Mike.
Okay, well, Doug, you need to get with me, so we can go over some things. And so you got the township number, 833-5578. Give me a call sometime, and we'll go over some things.
All righty.
And we'll go.
Sounds good.
Does anybody else have anything? Mr. Sim, any other guidance?
Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Hartshorn?
Yes.
Win?
Yes.
Mears?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.